Reconvene, and we're going to make a slight change to our order of the agenda. And in deference to Commissioner Sacks, who has got to depart, we're going to work on the budget first, and then we're going to come back to discuss our housing and homelessness, cross-departmental team. So we now have a quorum, so we are going to resume. And Sheri, that means that you're still stuck here.
And I have our budget director, Lisa Master, on her way down, too.
I want the record to show we did not do anything to our county administrator. We did not put her in that boot.
Yes, she's on her way.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. This afternoon, we're here to present you with an overview of our fiscal year 2020 budget and budget projections through 2026. At the end of this presentation, we will request your input and direction to begin the process for fiscal year '23 and future budget projections. I would like to take a few minutes to highlight the county's core values and strategic priorities adopted by the board and embraced by county staff. And we just passed out a single handout to you that I will go over. Our core values start with our fundamental competency, which includes training, tools, and professional development for our staff, unwavering commitment, do the right thing for the right reasons for our residents. It is all about our residents, creative leadership, explore fresh approaches with an open mind. And I think we shared with you some of the open-mindedness and cross-functional opportunities for staff. They're being exposed to other areas besides the departments that they work in, and it also allows them to realize their actions impact others' actions. And so therefore, we can do a better job, not only for county government, but for also our residents. And then our interactive communications, sharing information, listening attentively, and providing feedback. Our overall mission is to drive a continuous improvement culture of excellence that achieves a measurable high level of public satisfaction. It is our goal to maintain our high quality of life here in Palm Beach County, which includes our current acceptable levels of service. Our strategic priorities that the board has approved is economic development, housing and homelessness, environmental protection, infrastructure, public safety, and behavioral disorder. Our 22 budget highlights, our millage rate remained at 4.7815, flat for the 11th consecutive year. It is my intent to hold that line again for fiscal '23. Our total gross budget is $6 billion, of which $1.7 billion is in the general fund. The general fund appropriated reserves are $189.7 million, up $14 million over fiscal '21. And in talking to the rating agencies, they like to see us continue to improve our general fund reserves, so we will continue to make that a priority. Phase two of the Evergreen Compensation Study included and implemented on October 1, we have one more phase to go. It is my intent to, if possible, roll it into fiscal '23. We also included this year $75,000 for the community ID program, which was directed by the board, and we're working with the entity to implement such programs. For fiscal 2022, sources of funds by category are $5.9 billion, $6 billion budget, $2.4 million, 40% of it is through the fund balance, 24.6% of the $6 billion is current property taxes. We've got 4.7%, that's license, permit, and other taxes, 9.7% in governmental revenues, which includes grants, half-cent sales tax, and IST funds. Charges for services, it's 9.7%, that does include PBSO, WOD, fire, and airports. And then the inter-fund transfers make up about 10.6%. On the appropriation side, public safety makes up roughly about 23.6%. Physical environment is 9.8%. Transportation makes up 11.6%. Economic development, 3%. Human services, 2.2%. Cultural and recreation, 4.7%. Inter-fund transfer, 10.6%. General government, 10.5%. Other expenses, 1.3%. Internal services, 2.8%. And reserves are at 19.9%. Our property taxes, again, is 1.473 million. Countywide operating taxes equates to 72% of those property taxes. Fire rescue makes up 22.8%. Libraries, 4.7%. And countywide voted debt taxes is 0.5%. Our 22 general fund revenues by category primarily is currently 63.2% of property taxes make up that 1.7, roughly 1.7 billion. License permits and other fees make up about 2.9%. Intergovernmental revenues makes up the 13.1%, which includes any state share funding is included in this particular category, along with our half-cent tax as well as PBSO grant funding. In addition, we have charges for services, which makes up 2.7%. Our inter-fund transfers make up .04, and then fund balance is 17.7%. 22 general expenses by function in the general fund. Sheriff law enforcement makes up roughly about 33.8%. The sheriff corrections and judicial makes up 13.2%. Other constitutional officers make up 4.9%. Debt services at 3.4. Our capital in non-departmental is 8.1%. Our reserves is 11.3, and the BCC departments make up roughly about 25.3%. And this particular chart just kind of lays out employees per capita, 1,000 in population, and this just simply reflects that we are substantially below where we probably should be. However, we are slowly coming back from the recession when we significantly cut county staff back in '08. We've gone through a lot of attrition and just not filled those slots. We are starting to fill positions and come back, and that is something that we will be addressing with the board in fiscal '23. Speaking of fiscal '23, we also want to point out to you, as we start the budget process for fiscal '23, our budget calendar reflects our important dates that will get us from development of Budget and Strategic Workshop, which is today, and we'll be asking for your input at the end of the day. Departments will start to develop their budgets in January. Budgets are due to OFMB mid-March. We'll handle budgets through our management process in May. The initial budget workshop with the board will be June 14. Then we'll set the millage, ask the board to set a millage rate July 12. Our first public hearing is 13th of September, and then our second public hearing and adoption will be on September 20 of next year. So one of the things that I'd like to highlight, and I think if we can go back or request that you look at the single sheet I shared with you today, to look at our strategic priorities and to ask if you are still in agreement with these priorities remaining or give input.
Can you go back to that very first slide?
Economic development, housing and homelessness, environmental protection, infrastructure, public safety, substance use, and behavior disorders are your current strategic priorities. And I'm asking if the board would like to retain these as our strategic priorities or if you would like to tweak or make some radical changes.
I don't see anybody jumping. Commissioner Moreno?
It'd be good if I turned my microphone on, right? Hope you all had a nice lunch. I do think that our strategic priorities are in order and that we should keep them. Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, thank you. I certainly think that our strategic priorities are good and appropriate. If I had any change, it would be to take that housing and homelessness one and put it at the top.
They're not in any particular priority, but clearly.
Well, I would say, given the success on that first block in economic development, that's going to fall quickly if we don't do something about the housing situation in our county.
Okay.
All right. It looks to me like your strategic priorities are meshing with ours.
Very good. So moving on to, go back to the other slide. Okay. No, it should be slide 10. Oh, that's right. Okay. Okay. So for fiscal 2023, the only thing that I'd like to highlight in addition to your strategic priorities would be that Phase 3 of the Evergreen Study, which this will complete the Evergreen Study, adjusting salary ranges, adjusting for long-term employees, and making sure that we have appropriate salary allocations. It looks as that we're projecting it would cost us an additional $3 million, but this will complete the overall study, which the board approved. Again, we'll be looking at affordable workforce housing. We've got a number of revenues that are now to a point where we can address them. We are looking at some existing properties that we have and looking to put units, you know, in motion, in addition to some of the projects we already have in the pipeline, such as transitional housing on the old tax collector site on Lake Worth Road and military that is transitional housing. We will continue to work with developers and our housing groups in order to actually put units on the ground. We'll continue to build our CIP program as well as continue to build reserves.
Mad Administrator?
Housing authorities.
We know that we had to plug a hole in the budget this year with ARP money. We're not going to have that benefit next year. Are we going to be faced with a decision as far as millage next time around?
We're going to be looking at revenues coming in. Again, we may be able to, we'll be going after grant dollars and any additional revenue source that will be out there, we'll be on top of it. There is a possibility. It is my goal not to get to that point, but in order to maintain current levels of service and provide the services that this board directs, it depends on what comes in.
Understood. And you're referencing Phase 3 of the Evergreen. Obviously, that is pre-pandemic. The world has changed post-pandemic. We know that there's tremendous pressure on salaries right now. We've discussed as far as the building department trying to fill vacancies, and you've said that really we're competing against the private industry, Miami Dade, and Broward. Notwithstanding the $3 million that you're talking about to bring us to Evergreen numbers, do you see that as being adequate to give you the salary ranges you need to be able to attract the employees that we need to run this county?
That's a loaded question.
That's why you have the big bucks.
I'd like to pay my employees a heck of a lot more. They're definitely worth it. We'll continue to look at it. The actual Evergreen Study looked at our salary range compared to other comparable counties. Our ranges, we made the adjustments. The ranges are good. There are certain disciplines that are being paid a little higher, such as engineers, planners, you know, people in certain industries, HVAC inspectors in the building division. So we are looking at that, and when it's necessary, we make the appropriate adjustments. We can fund some of that through attrition when people leave. We don't, we're not able to fill positions immediately, so we can use some of those funds. But again, we're constantly looking at it, and as we make those unique adjustments, it also increases the budget for personal services. And when we get to that point and we're doing projections, et cetera, we'll have a better feel once budgets come in, proposed budgets come in.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. Your last bullet here, continue to build reserves. So in a perfect world, what do you imagine our reserves should be as a percentage of our operating budget?
So for most AAA-rated counties throughout the country, their reserves are about 30 to 35% of their total budget. We're about 22, 23%. And as your budget increases every year, the number gets larger and larger. I would like to see it more between 400, 500 million, which would get us into that 30 to 35% range. But our rating agencies like that we continue to build our reserves, and they don't really look always at a specific percentage, but on how we use reserves, how we build reserves. So I think we're in a pretty good shape. I'd still like to see them a little bit higher.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No more questions from up here.
Okay. So we'll move on to our 2022 to '26 projections. We're looking at our property value, and we're looking, if I can see here, and we're looking at roughly about every, for every 1% increase in property values that generate roughly about $10.6 million. We utilized 3.5% increase in operating and personal services expense, 3.5% projection in capital, 2% in revenues, which may be higher, but we are going to err on the conservative side, and then our amateur races schedule. We are looking at in '22, definitely having a balanced budget year, which we've approved. In '23, we're looking at projected shortfall for a simple majority vote of 21.8 million. And then, of course, projected shortfall based on our current millage rate is 12 million. So, and that's taking into consideration that our current millage rate of 4.7815 would remain. So to answer your question, unless we're cutting significantly, we definitely will need a major, we'll need a maximum vote in order to move forward, a supermajority vote.
Are you assuming a maximum 3% for residential based upon homestead max?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I know this year we were stuck with about a 1.4, 1.8. I think based upon real estate values, we probably can anticipate we would hit the cap with the 3% residential.
That's correct.
In our overall property values for 2023, we did go ahead and put in a 5% increase in property values overall. For the current year '22, we were at 5.6% higher than '21. So it still seems like we have a very active real estate market right now. Things are selling a lot higher than I think a lot of people expect it to be, so we should still see some positive property values for '23. And then in the out years, we dropped it down to 4% to see if there's some sort of a leveling off. You know, we would expect there's always new construction and some increases as, you know, homesteaded properties sell, you know, and things like that, so.
Let me ask you a question. I mean, debt versus tax levy. Obviously, this is a period of time when interest rates are probably the lowest we'll see for a long time. We can anticipate inflationary pressures that are going to push interest rates up. What is the philosophy as far as taking on additional debt during this period of time versus the pressure on the millage? How do we balance those two in this particular moment when interest rates are so low?
Right. So, you know, I mean, a few years ago, pre-COVID, we were discussing maybe two GO bonds, and that would have to go for referendum, be voted. As our existing GO bonds are falling off over the next couple of years, it would almost be swapping that millage rate. So as one falls off, we could bring in a new one, and it would be a level millage rate from that standpoint. Our other option, of course, is always our non-advalorem bonds, which is funded primarily out of our general fund. And as we see some of our debt service falls off, it's competing against everything else in the budget. So if we wanted to do a new bond issue funded out of the general fund, that debt service has to compete against all the other items that we have in here, just our normal services. And as you think that if I'm projecting a 4% increase in the out year for property taxes, then it's not as much of an increase. So it has to compete against all of those factors.
Okay. Thank you.
And I agree with Sheri that the GO bond, the debt service for GO is starting to drop off. So if the board was in favor of issuing bonds, then GO would be a recommendation from the county administrator to this board, not necessarily revenue bonds, because, again, it competes with all of your other priorities coming out of our budget in the general fund.
Okay. And I know we'd had some discussion about some potential bonding for homeless and affordable housing, and we also had some discussion about some environmental issues, so I'm sure that that's going to come up as we go further. Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You triggered a thought there. Another thing I learned last week at our conference, good to spend time there. I had made an initial request that we use the $75 million in the American Relief Plan funding, and we tried to match that with an environmental bond. Learned from our National Association of Counties CEO, he did a presentation on Treasury rules. They've updated those rules. Those dollars, the ARPA dollars, cannot be combined with any bond issuance, so we cannot do that. So my initial ask of staff to look into doing that, I'm taking that off the table. It's not something we can do.
Commissioner, we will continue to dialogue with Naco. Mr. Chase is very good about answering questions or getting answers from Treasury for us when we send those questions up to him. And Sheri, along with her staff, monitors and are on call with GFOA on ARPA dollars as well. So we're trying to stay in tune with what we can and cannot do with those dollars. Okay. So moving on to projections for 2024. Our projected shortfall at a simple majority vote reflects 46.2 million shortfall. Our projected shortfall on the current millage rate of 4.7815 brings it to 26.9 million shortfall. We, because the maximum millage rate for a simple majority vote in '24 is projected to be 4.5 million, we, a simple majority would take care of our needs in 2024. In 2025, we would be looking at a majority, no, would still be looking at a simple majority vote to get us through 2025. And then in 2026, we would be looking at a simple majority to get us through 2026, based on our projections and our estimates on expenditures. We did look at fire rescue, and it appears as though for fire rescue, we are projecting that we would need a supermajority vote. Is that true? Yeah. Yeah, we'll need a supermajority vote from '23 to 2026 to keep pace. I am working with the fire chief, and we've got a new union president, so I'll be working with him as well. So as we continue to look at these numbers, we can try and minimize the impact, but provide the appropriate level of service in fire rescue.
Are we investigating the idea of creating a special taxing district?
The county staff is not.
Okay.
This is, this special district came from the fire union. They were working on that. It was not the county.
On a fiscal basis, would that improve the situation? Would that, what would be the impact on the budget if we changed the way that we were financing the fire?
If the special district was developed and primarily took the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue and put it in that special district, they would have their own board, depending upon how legislation is written and adopted. So I do know that they were initially, there was some document, it made some serious assumptions, but it's not going anywhere right now. So it's kind of difficult to predict how that would work. It will just depend upon the language that's adopted by the legislature.
Is it my understanding that municipalities that are bumping up against their maximum millage would be the ones that would be greatest, have the greatest benefit because they wouldn't, this would be taken out of that calculation?
Again, it's depending upon the way the legislation is written and if those municipalities are currently under Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. Again, it will just depend on how municipalities want to address it. It's difficult for me to provide you that factual information.
With respect to the Jupiter fire fee, that adjustment comes when? Then we can bring them up to market rate?
I think the fees, the proposed fire fees will be coming to the board for consideration at the first meeting in December.
And that would be effective in the next?
Probably January.
January?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Not seeing any red lights?
Our library fund, you won't need a majority vote at all. It will remain a simple majority for libraries taxing district from '23 through '26. So if you have no further questions, that is our budget projections.
I think it's a good thing to bring these in after lunch. Things are quieter. Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, so I think the elephant in the room, Ms. Baker, is... Yeah, so I think the elephant in the room, Ms. Baker, is how we move forward, continuing to fund the terrific level of service we have in our public safety departments, notably our fire rescue and our sheriff's department. Are you anticipating having to make an ask of the board at some point to increase the tax rate on the MSTU and the cities that fall under our fire rescue umbrella? Do they have the room and their cap to handle that?
We've got a few that I am aware of that will have a major challenge if we increase the millage rate. I believe that it will depend upon the potential increase, and then we will have that assessment at that time. It's kind of difficult to sit here and predict it at this moment. You know, we'll be looking for efficiencies. We'll look to make sure that we're properly staffing and funding. But, you know, are there efficiencies we can have in order to not necessarily raise the millage? Raising the millage is the last resort for me. And so by the time I come to you, if I'm recommending a millage, we've actually looked at every scenario possible to maintain our current level of service, because with fire, it will have an impact on some of our municipalities that we provide the service for. And what we want to do is ensure that the service we're providing, the cities will not have a huge challenge in staying within the fire MSTU. We don't want to make it where we're costing more and they can pull out and provide the service themselves.
Okay. And then the other question is, you know, local governments have, have been the subject of a lot of legislation at the state level when it comes to law enforcement budgets. I'm proud that we haven't raised our millage rate in 11 years, and I'm also proud that this county has never voted to not fund the sheriff's office at the level that he has requested. I mentioned this a few years ago, and I was shot down by staff, but the dynamics have changed. Does it make more sense right now for us to back out whatever the percentage of the millage rate is from our general advalorem rate and create a law enforcement MSTU so that the public can see exactly how we're funding law enforcement in the same manner that we subject our fire rescue department to?
We have looked at that over the years, Commissioner. We can go back and look at it to see if laws have been modified in a way in which we can present that to the board. We will go back and look at it.
Okay. And I mean, I ask that because if we were up here, if we're up here and we have to face the challenge of trying to fund this immense shortfall that's going to happen in our, you know, sheriff's budget and in our fire rescue budget, if we raise the millage rate, just the general advalorem millage rate, people are going to say we're tax increasers and, you know, wasteful spenders. If we keep the general government operation steady and show that the only millage rate we're increasing is to fund law enforcement and fire rescue services, that is certainly a different argument to make to the public. And I think it's time that we seriously reconsider that position.
We will go back and look at it and compare it. Before, it was, we had some challenges in order to pull it out. And I can remember being in the budget office many moons ago and actually trying to pull this out, but there was certain rules that did not allow us to do it the way that we're currently structured. I do know that one of my counterparts in the state, their entire budget is primarily MSTUs. And then, you know, part of the other issue is we're not sure where the state is going to go with special districts either. So that's also a challenge. But we'll, definitely we'll look at it and come back to the board.
Okay. And the best thing about Florida statutes is that we have a legislature that doesn't really have a problem making changes to them. So if we see where the glitch is, maybe we can get somebody to fix it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it, unless the board has further directions for us.
Going once, going twice. I think you have gotten all we have to say on this subject.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's 20 minutes to two. I'm thinking we should probably take on the next area of the cross-departmental presentations, and let's see where that brings us. I think maybe our attention span will probably wane about 3 o'clock.
I think we have our housing and homelessness team ready.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Next up is Housing and Homelessness Cross-Department Team.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Administrator Baker. Sit on. It's, pardon? It's our pleasure to present the Housing and Homelessness Cross-Departmental Team. We have several members in our audience today, and those members are also listed on the screen. Next slide, please. Can those of you stand that are in the audience that are on the cross-departmental team? The best team in town right there. So we have three strategic priorities. Increase the ability of folks to live in Palm Beach County, reduce the number of homeless that are on our streets, and call our streets home, and improve access to services for the residents of Palm Beach County. Next slide? Next slide. Okay. As you know, we've seen a substantial recovery from the peaks of the economic harm caused by COVID. However, its impacts still linger, and the demand for services in the area of housing, homelessness, and social service programs continue to increase. In this slide, we highlight three areas dealing with the impact of housing and homelessness. Unemployment still lingers at 4.7% as of August. We had over 6,000 evictions filed in court in the first 12 months of COVID, and there were over 180,000 hungry folks in Palm Beach County, of which 52,000 are kids. Michael Howell from Planning will now present on Goal One.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. We're going to start with a short video that will highlight some of the activities of your departments in regards to homelessness and housing efforts.
For the Palm Beach County Departments involved in the Housing and Homelessness Cross-Departmental Team, the COVID pandemic triggered an all-hands-on-deck approach. The goal is to keep those housed in homes, assist displaced individuals with getting back on their feet, and to improve access to affordable housing for everyone. Through interdepartmental teamwork, we meet the challenges faced by our communities together. Here is just a small sample of all the work done over the past year.
Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, home buying has not waned. In 2020, UFIFIS Extension transitioned its homebuyer education program to an online platform. The curriculum helps future homebuyers understand the home buying process, make the best decision given their financial situation, and develop the knowledge and resources to be responsible homeowners. Thanks to the First Time Homebuyer class, participants have reported paying down debt, improving credit, increasing savings, and successfully purchasing a home. Since transitioning to the online platform in 2020, the First Time Homebuyer classes have reached 2,200 participants in 20 counties. Participation on the Housing and Homelessness Cross-Department Team provides for opportunities to collaborate on educational programs that support counties' housing goals. For example, Cooperative Extension has partnered with the Department of Housing and Economic Development to provide housing education to prospective homebuyers in the Workforce Housing Program. This collaboration is proving integral to successful delivery of the program and long-term As part of the Department of Housing and Economic Development's mission of changing lives and transforming neighborhoods into balanced communities, we recently collaborated on two replacement houses in western Palm Beach County in the city of Belglade and South Bay. Capital Real Estate Inspection Services Division oversaw our homeowners, Ms. Lola May Cameron of South Bay and Ms. Renee Gale of Belglade. They are the homeowners of the recent replacement houses. The homes are a two-bedroom, two-bath, tile flooring throughout, asphalt shingle roof, hurricane impact, and energy-rated windows indoors. New appliances include a range, dishwasher, washer and dryer, exterior deck with wheelchair access. Colman Associates were the architects who designed the homes, and 2SBW did the construction and was responsible for demolishing the existing homeowners relocation to temporary housing and moving into their new homes. The owners were actively part of the selection process on their new homes' interior and exterior finishes. Local families continue to face economic consequences of COVID-19 that risk loss of home, access to food, and utility disconnection. In 2020, the Department of Community Services approached the library system to assist the public in scanning documents and applying for federal funding to meet these needs. This initial collaboration connected 14,000 clients with food benefits at the height of the pandemic and was so successful that in 2021, both departments combined efforts to get emergency rental assistance into the hands of those in need. Through this partnership, the public can visit library branches across the county to use computers, to speak with a library staff member, or even receive guidance from a trained customer service representative hired through grant funding secured by Career Source. Palm Beach County was highlighted as a state leader in allocating ERA funds, partly due to the infrastructure set up through this unique partnership.
This slide shows the fiscal year 2021 performance in regards to Goal One. The Planning, Zoning, and Building Departments Workforce Housing Program produced 457 workforce housing units in fiscal year 2021. All other county programs produced 1,912 affordable housing units through new construction, acquisition, rehabilitation, and mortgage assistance. Together, this totaled 2,369 workforce and affordable units in fiscal year 2021. But notably, this total included 635 units for very low-income households who's earning less than 50% of very median income, or $42,800 for a family of four. This is a segment of the population that the housing market doesn't reach, so the county's work is very important in meeting their housing needs. COVID-19 economic impacts created housing instability among a wider swath of the community, and the county responded with assistance to homeowners and renters alike. During fiscal year 2021, Housing and Economic Development's Mortgage Assistance Program helped prevent foreclosure for 1,019 homeowners, and Community Service Department's Rental Assistance Program helped prevent eviction among 17,059 unduplicated households. And as highlighted in the video, IFIS Cooperative Extension provided homeowner education to 120 county residents, including those looking to purchase through the Workforce Housing Program. Next up, Wendy Tippett is going to speak to the team's goal related to homelessness.
Goal Two is to reduce homelessness in Palm Beach County, and for Palm Beach County residents, include families, seniors, individuals, and youth. If we could cue up the next video?
In 2017, the Palm Beach County Parks and Recreation Department partnered with the Division of Human and Veteran Services, the local social service providers, and Career Source to implement an innovative Parks-to-Work program to aid chronically homeless individuals residing in or nearby county parks. The purpose of the pilot program was to reduce the number of homeless persons residing in the parks, promote respect and self-confidence in homeless persons, and to provide a means of employment to homeless persons who are difficult to employ. The program also provides resources to help end participant homelessness, including job training and linkage to social services, permanent housing, and health care. The successful rollout of the program provided employment opportunities and job training for nine clients. The pilot program was extended permanently in 2018 and continues to provide benefits to the homeless population and the community as a whole. FUSE, which stands for Frequent Users Systems Engagement, uses data to determine how individuals who cycle through jails, homeless shelters, hospitals, and behavioral health crisis centers would benefit from supportive housing. With support from the MacArthur Foundation, the Criminal Justice Commission implemented FUSE in Palm Beach County in 2019. To date, 21 individuals have been housed. In the 24 months prior to being housed, these persons had a total of 103 jail bookings, totaling 1,932 jail bed days and costing the county $260,820. Only two participants have been rearrested since entering Palm FUSE, resulting in great savings to the community. The development of the county's first homeless shelter in the western communities, Lake Village at the Glades, exemplifies cross-department collaboration. Located on State Road 715 in Pahokee, the project site was obtained by the Department of Housing and Economic Development in 2019. The facility's development and operations department assessed property conditions and determined viability for redevelopment. The Board of County Commissioners had long recognized the need for a homeless facility to serve the Glades, and in 2020, when federal CARES funding became available, the county acted quickly to bring this longstanding goal to reality. Facilities completed the renovation of the property in only six short months at a cost of $5.5 million for Pahokee. The Community Services Department staffs and operates the facility, providing 18 shelter beds and 22 supportive housing units. In addition, the Fire Rescue Department collaborated by conducting COVID-19 testing and vaccinations on-site. More than 142 persons have already been served at Lake Village at the Glades since the doors opened in December of 2020, and the facility will continue to serve the county's goal of reducing homelessness for many years to come.
Okay. And then this is just a quick slide to let you know that our housing inventory went up 3% in the last year. The district is reporting 2,600 kids. That's still way lower than what we've had in previous years, but we are also partnering with the district around the HMIS system, which is the Homeless Management Information System, which, because they have, we have two different definitions in the school district and in Palm Beach County, really across Florida and the nation, most of the kids that are being counted in the school district are doubled up or in a place already, like Adopt a Family, The Lord's Place, Goodwill. So the access with the HMIS system has certainly allowed better communication. And I will now turn it over to Arlene, who is going to present on Goal Three, and our last goal, improve access to social services.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator, and everyone here today. About five years ago, I attended a meeting, and someone asked in that meeting, why does a rich county as Palm Beach has that many homeless and poor families? Today, I want to share this slide with you of our progress that has taken place over the years, that we've been doing that. But first, we'll do a video.
As we address housing and homelessness, it is important that we look at access to social services. social services. In a series of community conversations, Palm Beach County children identified the biggest issue they were encountering is mental health. Their experience with health impact, unemployment, and isolation around COVID has made them susceptible to feelings of depression, anger, isolation, and hopelessness. Through counseling services, we reached over 1,400 youth and their families. In summer, as parents are looking for access to nutritious meals and supportive environments for their children, youth services provided summer feeding and summer camp scholarships to meet the need. At summer camp, our children get quality programming that feed their brain while keeping them active. And annually, our kids work hard and compete in the Jam-a-thon. This year, 3,400 kids showed off their talents before Palm Beach County Leader and Celebrity Judge Natasha Beddingfield.
Food distribution in Gramercy Park started at the beginning of the pandemic. The initiative has begun and continued to be coordinated by Palm Beach County Office of Community Revitalization in partnership with local restaurants, nonprofits, neighborhood residents, and Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. PBSO and residents have been picking up food at various food distribution sites, and they've delivered this to residents in both Gramercy Park and other 11 CCRT communities.
I have been organizing and I have been coordinating food distributions in Gramercy Park. Using the board of Gramercy Park, we distributed food, we went door-to-door to people who didn't have transportation. I'm just grateful for even helping us in this time.
Palm Beach County contracts with the City of Riviera Beach Reentry Center, the Gulfstream Goodwill, and The Lord's Place to provide reentry services to individuals returning from incarceration to the community. The Riviera Beach Reentry Center's Construction Jobs Program offers participants the opportunity to learn construction job skills while rehabilitating dilapidated single-family homes. Participants spend a portion of time on the job and a portion of time receiving case management, cognitive behavioral interventions, and other services to ensure successful reintegration into the community. Programs like these are a win-win by providing participants with guidance and job skills while also resulting in rehabilitation of homes in the community. While this project showcases work being done through the Riviera Beach Reentry Center, it is a great model that can be replicated with other community partners.
As part of the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Commitment to Caring, our Mobile Integrated Health, or MIH, team offers post-EMS care. Our team of community paramedics and medical social workers support--
Okay. So this slide shows us the goals, Goal Number Three, shows us the improvements that we have done since we have started. It's a true collaboration between the Palm Beach County Departments. First, the Community Services Department's coordinated entry received a whopping 133,000 calls just this past year. 14% were homeless, and 486% required prevention services. The Summer Food Service Program, which is funded by the USDA and administered by the Youth Services Department, provided 153,383 meals to low-income, school-aged kids at various sites throughout Palm Beach County, as well as the Office of Community Revitalization that provided another 25,000 food boxes totaling 178,000. That was an increase from 11, an increase over 2,020 by all of 11,111 food boxes. Many of us as parents, and at summertime, we need to find a safe place for our kids because we need to be at work, and so we need to know that while we are at work, we are not worrying about what our kids are eating, or where, what trouble they're getting themselves in, or where they even are. And that's where the summer camp comes in. So such a supportive environment for our kids. It helps to reduce the summer slide, obviously, and it is a win-win for Palm Beach County. Additionally, the Youth Services Department awarded 3,453 scholarships to children from low-income families. Of that, all of 178 were experiencing homelessness. During the, as you know, COVID, we adjusted our schedules to accommodate these families as well. So we had our virtual summer programs, including the Spelling Bee, and continued to comply with our COVID safety. Like us adults, youth also experience mental health, and as seen in the videos, mental health was a great concern of our youth, and that's especially as a result of COVID. As such, 567 families in Palm Beach County received counseling services with high reach. PBC Fire Rescue Multidisciplinary Team offered programs to support individuals as well living with housing insecurity and homelessness. Patients served by their addiction, pregnancy outreach, and crew referral, I'm sorry, crew referral programs are all screened for housing insecurity. Of the 2,082 individuals served, 503 were identified as being homeless, and 174 homeless individuals were tested for COVID-19 during that period. The Youth Services Department also provided career development access to 176 interns in 2021. Reentry, which is near and dear to my heart, also received funding through the Public Safety Department and partnered, as you saw in the video, with Riviera Beach Reentry Center, one of the centers that we contract with to provide services for individuals coming back from prisons. And so they partner with the CRA, Riviera Beach CRA, as well to rehabilitate two homes, one in Belgrade and one in Riviera Beach as well. That is a great model, one that we feel is easily replicated throughout the county and also throughout other cities, where we can have our reentry participants assist in rehabilitating those homes immediately as they're out of prison or incarceration. While they're doing that, they're learning construction skills, and they are getting a stipend and cognitive behavioral intervention as well. A great model, I think, that we can replicate. And finally, but not least, our very important library that provide workshops to all of 251 individuals in employment, personal financing, which has been a struggle for many of us, as well as home buying. And so it's a perfect segue for me to introduce our, it's our next speaker, Adam Davis, from one of our library director, who will wrap up and present our next steps for this team.
Thank you very much. To close us out, as you can see, our increased departmental collaboration over the last three years, and especially over the last year, has led to many advances in terms of housing and homelessness. Our next steps that are currently underway continue to meet COVID relief funds requirements and deadlines. Palm FUSE will enhance client and cost tracking and address some of the challenges that come with having multiple databases and different, differentiating reporting requirements. Continue to align funding streams with team goals and metrics in mind, developing a homeless dispatch call center via coordinated entry. Increased collaboration between Community Services, Park Rangers, and PBSO to provide housing services and connection to essential resources. Explore more cross-departmental use of a coordinated entry system to identify households most in need of services. And various departments receive similar calls for residents and assistants, so we will be exploring how we can better coordinate this for better efficiency. On the horizon, resident assistance through new online portal and other virtual platforms, and Housing and Economic Development and Facilities Partnership to develop affordable housing on county-owned properties. And with that, thank you all for your time, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and County Administrator. We welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. I have an initial question. When I arrived here, we had a real focus on veteran homelessness, and I am struck by the complete absence of any discussion of that area. Is it all gone?
Forty-nine left.
Forty-nine left. Well, again, I think that-- I just think that, again, from my perspective personally, I would like to see us continue and have it as part of the program to make sure that we are still remaining focused on the veterans' needs as well as the others and not lose sight of that. Okay, Commissioner McKinley, you're first.
Yeah, thank you. Couple of comments. This is fantastic, and two concerns, and I've said it before and I'll keep repeating it, we're going to see a lot of residents with substantial rent increases in the next year, and whatever adjustments we need to make to our rental assistance programs, let's go ahead and take a look and make those adjustments if we need to. The second thing, our opioid crisis, which is now really a fentanyl-laced, any kind of drug crisis, is not going away, it's getting worse, and if we need to make adjustments to the services that we're providing there, let's take a look at that and make sure we're heading in the right direction. And then the only thing is, and you know it means a lot because I'm freezing and Commissioner Moreno is giving me her blanket, but I'm going to ask that this board stand up and give this team a round of applause because these guys have had to be, like our Fire Rescue Department and our sheriffs, they've had to be on the ground facing every constituent during this COVID pandemic and lifting up an unbelievable program in the federal dollars and creating the applications and getting the money out the door and everything that they've had to do, and to open up a 43-unit transitional facility in Belgrade and renovate that in less than six months. I mean, I'm looking at this one, and I'm so impressed with every team in this county, but this one in particular, given the last 18 months that this county has endured, they deserve a round of applause. And Wendy Tippett is still my hero. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Weiss, Vice Mayor Weiss, yours is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Echo my colleagues' comments as well. You know, one of the things I've, since I've been on the board and trying to sort of wrap my head around is we have so many different pots of money, both administered by the county, some administered by the state, some administered by federal government, private entities, all trying to get after this issue in our county of homelessness, of hunger, of returning, people returning from incarceration into our community, and trying to understand how much we're investing and what is, you know, where are we seeing maybe better returns than other places? But I think it's really a challenge to do this without understanding all the resources that are coming together from different places, and I know you guys have done a yeoman's job of trying to get your databases more aligned, and it's a real challenge, but I would ask you in the next upcoming year, and I know you've got a lot on your plate, if we could ever get our arms around that, I think it would be really insightful, not only for this board, but for future boards and for everybody, to be able to really measure, you know, the investments of resources being made and then the returns, you know, where, you know, and the returns in terms of moving, helping to move people, you know, out of these dire consequences that they're dealing with in their lives. But you all do just a phenomenal job, and I can, and just to echo what Commissioner McKinley said, you know, and through this last year, so, you know, everything getting thrown at you all, and you're taking care of it. Just thank you very much on behalf of the people of Palm Beach County.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I certainly echo those comments. My only thought is, I mean, obviously, we're dealing with a population that's been hammered by the pandemic, and certainly a lot of the services that we've had to provide were a result of the displacement, people losing their jobs, people having a lot to deal with, and I'm hoping that some of these numbers start coming down as we start coming out of this and people are going back to work, and obviously, we know there's plenty of jobs out there, there are jobs calling for people. But I'm struck by Goal One, which is increase the ability of those who work in the county to be able to live in the county, and I think that's something that is most important to me, that we need to continue to strive to make it possible for people to live in a place that's decent and affordable in our county so that they can work in this county. Our employees who work for this county, our employees who work as teachers, our employees who work as firefighters and policemen, and they should be able to live in this county, and we need to do everything we can to get to that point, and, you know, I applaud everything that's gone on, but it's certainly not enough, and we have to figure out a way, both ourselves up here as we're talking about zoning, and the agencies out there that are certainly creating a safety net and helping to counsel people so that they understand how to get a mortgage and how to buy a house, or how to afford a place that they can rent. It's going to be a long, hard battle, and like Commissioner McKinley said, it's only gotten worse than pandemic. She's already pointed to the place she lives is probably going to cost twice as much as what she's paying right now for the next person who comes in to rent that apartment, so we have a lot of work to do. But thank you very much for this presentation. All right, I think we are done with this segment. What is the board's desire? Do you want to continue on, or do you want to put this off for another day? Commissioner McKinley, do you have any thoughts on that regard?
Well, since they already started the video, I wouldn't mind if we went ahead and did the substance use and behavioral disorder presentation.
All right, are we all in agreement we'll continue on? Okay. Let's do it. Sherri, they're not letting you out of your seat. 2:45? All right, we're going to aim for a hard stop at 2:45.
We're just going to check, excuse me, Commissioners, to see if they're all here. Next one up was Economic Development, but we want to make sure that all the substance use team members are here. John, you ready? John, you ready?
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioners, just before John gets started, I just, I did want to say that what we're trying to do, as you can see, is we're building future leaders. So we're exposing you to a lot of folks from the team that you may not have seen before. So we like the idea of giving them that exposure to you, so enjoy.
Very good.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Good afternoon, John Hugh Liquid, Community Services Department. And I again served as one of the co-leaders for Substance Use and Behavior Disorders, cross-departmental team, along with Lauren Young from, actually Lauren Work Young now, with County Fire Rescue and Dr. Twyla Taylor from the Youth Services Department. Fifteen diverse individuals from 12 county departments represents this team whose mission is to address the issues, and often very complicated issues, facing individuals, families, and systems of care related to substance use and behavior disorders. And as other teams did, our team members, if they could stand, I would certainly appreciate that, so the Commissioners could see you. Next slide, please. What you see are the cross-departmental team goals, which are to first, to establish a readily accessible, integrated and coordinated recovery-oriented system of care that meets the needs of Palm Beach County residents, to promote best practices and innovative strategies and programming, and to promote effective substance use and mental health prevention and education programs, sound public policy, and a very strong commitment to quality, evidence-based substance use and mental health services. Next slide. To ensure individuals are receiving the resources they need to maintain their recovery, we take all aspects of their lives into consideration. We just don't focus on their use. We really want to look at an individual very comprehensively. So we take these into consideration. What we do take into consideration are social and emotional support, health and well-being, housing stability, employment, and often needing to address legal concerns. From physicians to mental health providers to peer support, we are offering, measuring, and monitoring recovery wellness through what we call Recovery Capital Indexing. This indexing captures an individual's current state of recovery and guides long-term recovery predictors regardless of drug of choice, and allows us as government officials to make data-informed decision-making, data-driven decision-making. What you see before you is just a one component of the person-centered recovery-oriented system of care we have been advancing over the last couple of years. And in your packet and in the supplemental, you'll see more detailed information that's provided, that goes into, again, more detail about this system of care modeling and the work associated with it. I'm proud to introduce Joanna Reed, a colleague and partner in our efforts at Community Services Department, who will continue with Goal One. Next slide.
Thank you, John. Palm Beach County has many access points for immediate help. This list highlights a few of those programs, along with some of our many partners. In Palm Beach County, we seek to provide support, services, and life-enhancing skills to some of the most vulnerable residents in our community so that everyone may live a high-quality life. Next slide, please. Reaching patients and families impacted by substance use disorders is critical in making the connection to life-saving care and services. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue's Mobile Integrated Health Systems Addiction Program continues to serve as a bridge at an important access point during an emergency medical service call. We invite you to watch this team in action. Following the short video, Cindy Longley from County Cooperative Extension will continue with Goal One.
As part of the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Commitment to Caring, our Mobile Integrated Health, or MIH, team offers post-EMS care. Our team of community paramedics and medical social workers support patients and families by offering crisis intervention, assessment, disease education and management planning, care coordination, resource provisions, and emotional support. We support advocacy to ensure patients have access to the right level of care and can strive for the highest life quality they envision for themselves. Our Overdose Data to Action, OD2A-funded addiction program, focuses on the needs of individuals who have a substance or alcohol use disorder. MIH is a critical bridge to community addiction health or mental health providers, medical-assisted treatment, peer support, and harm reduction programs. We do this by partnering with the patient in finding the right care options for their unique situation. Our Crew Referral Program provides services and supports to individuals in need of mental health support, grief counseling, crisis care, and medical care coordination. Throughout the pandemic, the MIH team has delivered innovative services to the community to meet the COVID-19 education, testing, and vaccination needs of individuals and families. As COVID-19 continues to impact our county, MIH is prepared to continue assisting in connecting patients to resources and partner agencies. This helps to address the tsunami of needs that individuals and families are often identified to have on the scene of their 911 call. When the entire health and social service continuums work together, we set EMS patients on a path to successfully managing their health and wellness needs.
Thank you, Joanna. As we saw in the video, the county is here for our residents and committed to helping them with their needs. This data reflects the number of patients each calendar year who had an identified 911 call related to alcohol or drugs and the number of interventions the Mobile Integrated Health Team made through its addiction program. There was a tremendous increase in reach in 2021 due to the expansion of the program from part-time to full-time that was made possible through OD2A grant funding. Another innovative access point for services is transporting medically appropriate patients to the Addiction Stabilization Unit at JFK North. Now Jill Singer from Community Services will continue with Goal Number Two.
Thank you, Cindy. This slide, which is informally called a heat map, can be used to locate various data points that can help us identify areas where programs and services are needed. These heat maps from the Medical Examiner's Office identify deaths related to an overdose. Each dot represents a life, and multiple dots, clusters of dots represent multiple lives lost in a particular location. Next slide. This graph is from the Office of the Medical Examiner as well, and shows that the total reported drug-related deaths are down 13% from 2020 to 2021. Still, 642 deaths occurred in 2020. Of those, 89% were related to opiates, 18% to cocaine, and 15% were related to alcohol as part of their cause of death. Of the 642 deaths in 2020, 84% of the decrease, of the deceased, were identified as white, 8% as black, 6% were Hispanic, and less than 1% were identified as other. Although drug-related deaths have decreased, we are seeing a 31% increase in suicide-related deaths over 2020. We are still evaluating the impacts of COVID-19 on this data, which will be especially important as suicide deaths among minors have decreased 47% between 2019 and 2021. If any factors related to the pandemic are related to this decrease, it would be valuable to future suicide prevention initiatives. More details are available in the supplemental packets that you have before you. Next slide, please. In this heat map example from Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, we used opioid-related 911 calls from 2019 through 2021. As you can see, clusters remain fairly consistent across these three years. These types of data were recently used to determine locations for the county's Syringe Access Programs mobile unit, which helps with risk-reduction efforts. And heat maps were also used to plan where to establish the hub, the county's newest recovery community center. Both the Syringe Access Program and the hub are resources that Palm Beach County Fire Rescue use as for referrals of individuals for assistance. Next slide. The County Syringe Services Program, or the Needle Exchange Program, was launched through a partnership with Rebel Recovery, the Ryan White Program, and the Office of Behavioral Health and Substance Use Disorders. In addition to providing clean syringes in exchange for used ones, this program provides education on harm-reduction behaviors, offers testing for hepatitis and HIV, and also provides services to individuals living with HIV. Next slide, please. Several community partners of the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Addiction Program provide free Narcan to the community to prevent a drug-related death. Narcan can be used by anyone for emergency treatment of a drug overdose. Although emergency medical services or EMS personnel are able to manage an overdose event through other measures, EMS sometimes does use Narcan when those measures are not working. Fire Rescue's NarCare deployment numbers are well below the number of overdose calls, as you'll see on the chart, for this reason. Narcan is still a critical tool for individuals in the community to use when someone is experiencing an overdose, for them to use before EMS arrives. Next slide, please. Unique opioid prescriptions have been steadily decreasing, but legal prescription opioids are just one element of the issue related to substance misuse. Illegally purchased heroin, and as been mentioned, fentanyl and its analogs, are more accessible and less costly than legal prescription opioids. Studies indicate that prescription opiates, opioid use is a strong predictor of heroin use later on. One way to address this is through the pill disposal programs, such as that conducted by the Operation Pill Draft, which has boxes located throughout Palm Beach County. And now Joanna Reed from the Community Services Department, Office of Behavioral Health, will continue.
Thank you, Jill. This graph, we highlight all court filings in the county for drug possession cases. You can see that opioid possession is consistently a small percentage of all cases, which seems to support law enforcement's policy not to arrest in overdose cases. The pie chart on the right shows that drug charges represent 11% out of all criminal cases filed in Palm Beach County. Next slide. This graph shows a deeper dive into case filings for drug possession. As noted in the previous slide, possession other includes marijuana, amphetamines, synthetic narcotics, hostologens, barbitrates, and other substances, but excludes opioid and cocaine. This graph shows the demographics of individuals in Palm Beach County within these filed cases. Next slide. This graph shows into an even more detailed related to drug possession case filings specific to marijuana cases and the demographics of those individuals involved. The pie chart on the right demonstrates that 87% of these cases are associated with males and 13% are associated with females. Next slide. As we look into alcohol use and other case filings for driving under the influence, this graph shows that figures have remained steady over the years without extreme peaks or valleys in the totals. DUI cases represents 4% of all court case filings. Next slide. Next, the detailed information on DUI cases and the demographics of the individuals involved. The pie chart on the right demonstrates that 75% of these cases are associated with females, with males, excuse me, and 25% are associated with females. Now I turn it over to Jackie Lambert from Parks and Recreation to go over Goal Number Three.
Thank you, Joanna. The Employee Assistance Program, or EAP, is a program that assists all county employees and their immediate family members. EAP provides assistance navigating mental health issues, work-related problems, and other interpersonal crises that may arise. This county benefit also serves as an access point for county employees and their families who need assistance with mental health, substance, and alcohol-related care. EAP has experienced an increase in employees seeking counseling since the COVID-19 pandemic began, and continues to offer innovative programming to ensure all employees and their families have access to the supportive services they need to ensure their well-being. Next slide. Children and teens' mental health is a topic that's vitally important to our county. In 2021, Youth Services Department held four different community conversations in various areas throughout the county, which resulted in the majority of participants expressing that mental health is their primary concern. Youth Services explored options to make an immediate impact and continues to consider future programming to expand services at a time when mental health providers are in high demand. Next slide. One program that's especially important to meet the needs of the increased demand for mental health care is community training related to youth and family mental health. Over the past year and a half, Youth Services, along with many other county departments, adapted to provide virtual training, which increases accessibility to participants across the county. Next slide. Through cross-departmental partnerships, the county offers many outreach events to provide information on resources available related to mental, physical, social, and emotional health. To highlight a few examples, Youth Services Department and Parks and Recreation safely offered a combined 158 outreach education programs in 2021, as seen on this graph. Next slide. When looking at services provided, this graph illustrates both the outcome and the level of satisfaction with the trauma-informed services at High Ridge Family Center. For youth who enter the program with clinically significant issues in three areas, home, school, and behavior towards others, improvement rates of 92, 97, and 100% respectively for years 2019 through 2021 are measurable outcomes showing the success of the program despite challenges. Palm Beach County is truly making a difference. Next slide. Parks provide a connection to nature, which studies demonstrate relieves stress levels, tightens interpersonal relationships, and improves mental health. One example of Parks and Recreation providing education on the mental health and wellness benefits being in nature includes a novel partnership with healthcare providers throughout the county that give patients a Parks prescription to encourage use of our county's free park system to address physical inactivity, chronic diseases, social isolation, and loneliness. Now I would like to turn it back to Cindy Longley.
Thank you, Jackie. Our libraries are another critical access point for services. Our PBC library system partnered with agencies and health professionals to bring 34 virtual events on substance use and behavioral health on residents in 2021. The library system also employs a health librarian and piloted a social work program to meet the needs of those who come to the library seeking help with social service, mental health, and substance-related needs. The library also has an extensive outreach program and serves as the resource hub on numerous topics to everyone in the community, many of which you've heard about in other cross-departmental team presentations. Next slide. Another important resource is the County Cooperative Extension, which offers a wealth of education and training services from ABCs of anger management to mindfulness in parenting classes. Our outcomes show a 95% success rate in increasing family relationships among attending our, amongst those attending our workshops. Next slide. Although programs and access points are vital, the provision of various types of housing and tools for self-sufficiency is equally important. On September 3rd, 2021, an amendment to the Unified Land Development Code was approved that provides guidelines for those seeking to provide housing and services. These guidelines, along with collaboration with the licensing agencies, will ensure the appropriate level of care is provided. I will now turn it over to John to bring closure to our presentation.
Thanks, Cindy. And despite the impact and effects of COVID-19, we have had many accomplishments in the past year, and you can see those listed, and some of them have been referred to critically thanks to the board passing the ordinance, so allow for syringe access. We were able to accomplish that. Many members were able to attend the opening of our Recovery Community Center in Delray, you know, which is really a linchpin to what we're trying to accomplish here in the county with a network of those. But we're also looking enthusiastically to 2022 as we dive deeper into the realm of Substance Use and Behavior Disorders services in Palm Beach County. Next slide. And in 2022, our cross-departmental team is diving in together to continue to promote collaboration and partnership, both within our departments and as critically with our community partners. So we are looking to continue... and as critically with our community partners. So we are looking to continue to address issues of disparity within the criminal justice system and our system of care. And as was noted, clearly an uptick in suicides, increasing our efforts around suicide prevention, continuing to promote trauma-informed care and those methodologies, not only in expansion of peer supports, but as I've already indicated critically to our work is this expansion of a network of recovery community centers throughout the county. Also continuing to educate on the importance of coping strategies for individuals and families. And lastly, facilitating continued interdepartmental collaboration and community partnerships. And again, thank you commissioners for your time, for your attention, and we're absolutely glad to address any questions you might have, and I wish you a very happy Thanksgiving and happy and safe holidays.
Thank you, John. And Commissioner McKinley has the first question.
Surprise, surprise. So predictable sometimes. John, congratulations on your recent award. You deserve all the recognition that you get. Question for you or for Ms. Baker, some of the feedback I've received from people who are using or helping people find the services of the addiction unit up at JFK and some of the other programs, and when we talk about access to care, like physical access to care, and I know I worked very closely with Todd and with Clinton in trying to get some bus passes. You know, if you look at that hotspot map and you see all of those red dots, a lot of them are centered on the central to southern part of the county and our services are on the northern part of the county. And so they get, they go there, they get their service and then they have trouble getting their follow-up care. Can we put somebody from Palm Tran on this team to help work through some of those transportation issues people may have? Okay, that would be great. And then I already made some comments about other services. I just, I just want to point out, and I think it came from the Criminal Justice Commission, it is the slide under goal to promoting best practices and innovation strategies and programming to reduce drug-related deaths and overdoses. And it's the slide on case filing for drug possession marijuana by race in Palm Beach County. And it's really disturbing to see that our black population makes up 19.8% of the population in this county, and yet when you look at court case filings for marijuana possession, more than half are black residents in Palm Beach County. I know we have a civil citation program. I know at least in the unincorporated area, the sheriff has chosen not to utilize it. I'd be interested in getting a little bit more data breakdown on this particular slide and seeing what we can do to reduce that disparity because that's concerning to me.
I'm glad you asked that question. We put together that data and then we put as next steps to dig deeper because when we looked at it, we said, wow, what's, you know, we peel back the onion, what do we see? So that's on our goals for next year to really dig deeper into that, those demographics.
Right. And I think it's also important to look at, were there other charges in addition to that filing or was that the only charge that was filed? So a little more information would be great. And congratulations to all of you. This is, this is good information. Thank you for everything you've done the last few years.
Thank you, Commissioner. John, you have obviously beaten us down. Oh, Commissioner Marino.
Just one quick question. On the slide, total number of Employee Assistance Program cases per fiscal year, it says in 2020 that you incorporated telemental health services. Is that continuing? Okay. And is it continuing for the foreseeable future? Is it something that will be going forward? So, I mean, access to health over telemedicine is great. As a matter of fact, my 86-year-old mom has been able to stay home instead of go to a hospital or another place for her telemedicine. So is it something we're going to see continuing more than just next year or is there a time certain end to it?
Well, at this time, they have continued using telemental health as needed, but as you can see, the numbers are still pretty high for a small office of a few therapists for all of our 6,800 employees and families. So it is something that is at this moment being utilized, but we don't know if it'll be continued depending on the need of our employees and the families using the services.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we are overloaded with information. So I think we're going to stop here. We'll continue the presentations at a later date. We'll have the county administrator schedule another workshop or tack it on to another date. And so at this point, I'm going to invite any of the commissioners who have any comments they want to make at this point. I'll start with Commissioner McKinley.
Yes, thank you. The Wellington Library Branch was closed for the past year or two for renovations and we're getting ready. We've done the soft reopening. We're getting ready to do the hard reopening or the official dedication of that facility coming up in a few weeks. I'd like to give direction to staff on two, two issues related to that library. The, the first one, I know they're looking at a conference room or a piece of the interior of that library being named in honor of former Wellington Mayor Tom Wenham and his wife Regis Wenham. So Tom and Regis Wenham. Tom is a, was a mayor of the Village of Wellington. He's a longtime community servant, still very, very active in the community, a retired Palm Beach County Fire Rescue personnel. And his wife has served as my appointee on the library advisory board. Libraries are her love and her passion. I believe she served under some of my predecessors as well. So I'd like to give staff direction to look at a possible naming of some component of the library. In addition to the Wenhams, I'd also like if staff could consider naming the children's wing in that particular library in honor of Kathy Foster. Kathy was the first mayor of the Village of Wellington. Kind of odd to see a commissioner want to name something after their previous opponent, but she is a dear friend. She's also an epitome of what a mother and a parent should be, having raised her own children, had to turn around in her, what should have been her retirement years and adopt her grandson and raise her grandson. And I think it would be very fitting in honor of her service to the village and her role model as a parent, to look at naming the children's wing after her as well when we do the official dedication next month.
Without objection, that direction is given to the county administrator. Commissioner Marino.
Oh, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I think it was all said. So thank you all. Thank you to staff. You've done a remarkable job and I look forward to hearing the rest of this presentation. I think it's important for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have my intern Ben, who's visiting from American University. So he's here. And then also Pat, his friend is, I think this is his second time in Florida and he's from Thailand. And so they're visiting and visiting to see us in action and want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And Marcella and Keith, this is a great presentation and it seems like the presentation is getting better and better every year. So really appreciate your dedication to the collaboration throughout the county. We really appreciate very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor Weinroth. Just echo the comments of my colleagues on the board. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving and no further comments. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Weiss or Vice Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, my, I echo everybody's comments. Thank you. And I mean, what amazing work you all are doing and clearly shows. And also to our folks out in Palm Beach County, wishing you all a very happy Thanksgiving with you and hopefully with your family and friends.
Commissioner McKinley, you got a second at bat.
Just in addition to Thanksgiving, next weekend, Sunday is the first night of Hanukkah. So happy Hanukkah. We won't assemble before that starts. So happy Hanukkah too.
Thank you, Commissioner. And my comments will echo my colleagues with respect to Thanksgiving. Everybody should have a great time except for the turkey. I wanted to remind everybody that we have a new way of riding the buses in Palm Beach County. Paradise Pass has now been initiated and it is contactless. It is a reloadable smart card or app on your phone. I suggest you go onto palmtran.org to learn about it. And I understand that they're giving discounted filling of the card. Todd, do you have any information on that as far as a secret code that someone can put in and, and get a reduced fare load? Put him on the spot. Oh, here comes Mr. Forbes. Funny, you know, I thought I saw you before. Tell us all about Paradise Card.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the PSA. Yes, we are excited. We implemented the Paradise Pass and fare collection system on November 14th. We are a little bit over a week into this. We have more than 3,200 of our riders that have registered their accounts as a Paradise Pass. So we are offering a transit benefit of $10 if you register your card. So when you register your card or download the app, the mobile app, you get $10 of transit, about five trips. And people are really taking advantage of that. You know, like with any implementation of technology, we have had our little quirks here and there that we're working through, but the customers are really enjoying it. And so I want to thank the board and county administration for all your support with that project and of course, the federal government who, who fully funded this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. And we're back up to full strength as far as the roots now?
Yes, we are back up to full strength. Ridership is in a slow creep in terms of the trend, but we are working hard to find new customers and get our ridership back.
And hopefully Paradise Pass will be just that initiative to help people jump on and jump off.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baker, I see your light. You must have something you want to tell us.
I'm done.
You have to turn on your microphone.
First, I have to say that I'm, I can't remember the last time I was this proud. But I want to thank the board for your leadership, the policies that you've set and you've allowed us to implement them in a way in which I, I'm looking at your faces and your comments and it appears that you're, you're pleased with what staff has done. I want to thank all of the staff involved in this process. It has been a process and the fact that we're talking across departments, saving taxpayers' dollars so that we know what's going on and going down to the very low levels, which are really the more important people in our workforce because they're the people that do the day-to-day work to get things done and make it palatable to all of our residents. But I, I am very pleased and I'd like to thank Strategic Planning for what you've done and Sherry, and to wish everyone a very healthy, safe and happy Thanksgiving and happy Hanukkah. Make sure, yes, I'm going to say it, make sure we stay safe with making sure each of your loved ones are protected, if not vaccinated, at least taking the precautions to remain safe. We want to keep our numbers down. We don't want to spike after Thanksgiving. So thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.